Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting, Tuesday, February 22nd, little past 10 o'clock. We're going to move right into the consent agenda. Melanie?
Approval of payroll, February 4th, February 18th, 2022. Approval of claims, February 3rd, 9th, 17th, 2022. Approval of minutes, February 1st, 2022. Treasurers monthly report, January 31st, 2022 filed.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Let's, I'll take the consent agenda and we'll open it up to the floor for action.
Motion to approve consent on agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Commissioners, we have a consulting agreement between Porter County Government and General Services, General Services Effective, General Insurance Services effective April 1st, 2022. I think we have them coming in front of us here. Hey, how you doing, Eric? Morning.
Alright. Yep, so we've got the consulting agreement up for renewal. Obviously, we've made a lot of progress over the last 12 months. We're excited to continue moving forward with you guys. We're not making any changes to it, so everything's the exact same as it was. Love to continue to serve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on a consulting agreement between Porter County Government and General Insurance Services. This would be effective April 1st, 2022, to continue on the partnership with county government on the general, the insurance programs for the county. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have a business associate agreement between the Porter County Government and General Services. Want to give us an outline of what that agreement is for?
Yep. Yeah, it's just sharing of information back and forth, you know, understanding that regulations around HIPAA and whatnot. Again, no changes being made on that front. It's just a continuation of the prior agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a business associate agreement between Porter County Government and General Insurance Services. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Eric. Have a good day. Use what? Next up, we have Civic Plus. This is a purchase of another block of 1,000 SMS subscriptions. Kurt, why don't you give us the quick version?
Good morning, Commissioners. In January, we approved adding another 1,000 SMS subscriptions to our website. Since then, we are, well, as of right now, we're down to less than 300 available. Most of those have been during, for our winter road reports and travel alerts kind of thing. But as we roll into the ARPA process, we're going to be encouraging people to sign up for notifications of the various meetings, the agendas, and the videos that we will be producing after the meeting takes place. I don't want to be in the position of, and I don't have a clue what we're going to see, but I'd rather be prepared and have that extra 1,000 there so I don't have to rush to you at the last minute and say, "We need more." So that's what I'm asking today, is the approval for another 1,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to purchase an additional block of 1,000 SMS subscriptions to Civics Plus for the county website. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Kurt. Next up, ARP Committee and Subcommittee Structure Adoption. So do we, we just want to open that up to finish their, try to finish the discussion of how we're going to set these subcommittees and subcommittees up?
I think, based on our discussion last time, the changes were adding some rural township trustees. Do you want to let us know who those are going to be?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak with some trustees, but it was my understanding that the, it was the largest ones, the two largest rural ones would make most sense, so.
Oh, whatever you want.
But, yeah.
Maybe...
Would that be Porter and Union? Or would that be?
I think it would be definitely Porter.
Porter is the largest. I don't know if it's the most populated, but it's the largest.
Think it is.
Well, I'll let...
Yeah, well, I'll gather that and get it back to everybody.
Um, let's see, what else did we? I think that was the only change there. And then, for the facilitator, I wanted to switch gears on that and appoint Vicki Urbannick, who has graciously agreed to help us out if we should vote that way.
I think that's a good selection. I don't know. Thank you.
No, thank you.
It'll be a lot of work.
I don't have any other changes that I've picked upon. You guys wanted to make. I can go through it all again if you'd like.
Why don't we just go through it?
Alright. So we have the Central Committee, which will be chaired by our non-voting facilitator, Vicki Urbannick. One Commissioner, should I go through the appointments of ourselves that we discussed as well at this time? Or do we need to do that separately?
We can do it through this.
Okay. Myself as the one Commissioner, two council members who they will appoint, the county auditor, who will already be on the committee, and county attorney as non-voting advisors. And then the Behavioral Health and Social Services Committee will have Commissioner Jim Biggs, two council members, two citizens. The applications for citizens' appointments are currently online. We'll be taking those until March 8th, hopefully.
On the Behavioral Committee, I'm wondering if we need to add another non-voting member?
Oh, I missed that. That's on my, Porter Stark.
Porter Stark.
Yeah.
And, you know, at the end of the day, they're, they're our regional center. We, the county gives them over $2.5 million a year, and this is what they do. So I think we should have them, as these programs and as these ideas come forward, we need to have an entity there that can help us decipher a lot of this information. So I would suggest we put them on as a non-voting member, but that's just my take.
No, I agree.
Is that...
Like an advisor?
Or an advisor. I mean, is that, if we were, if we have decided on, I don't think we've clarified this portion of it, but if you're on, you're sitting on one of the committees, you are not applying?
Right.
I realize that's non-voting, but are, are we willing to?
Well, we've only been talking about voting members.
I have no idea if they're applying for any monies or not. I don't either.
I'm just looking at, from the standpoint of having someone on this committee that understands this realm, and if this is one of the biggest things that is going on out there in the public right now, I think we would want to have one of our partners that the county gives a lot of money to, to help sit in these meetings and help run them. And so, we really talk about, we don't miss it, you know? We need to talk about the real problem, and I think, to me, that's confronting it, but I'm just throwing it out there. I, they're a partner of the counties right now, and they're invested. So, um, that would...
I don't think anyone else is going to know more about...
No, that, yeah, that's fine. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that as well.
And it's non-voting.
I just want to, you know...
No, I know your point. I get it.
If it reflects the things, if they end up, they end up applying.
Well, they're non-voting, so I don't know if they'll end up applying or not. I mean, if they're...
I have no idea.
So two council members who they will appoint, two citizens, one appointed by us, one appointed by the council. Like I was saying, applications are being taken until March 8th, and then hopefully we will start appointing on the 15th. The Portage and Center Township Trustees as non-voting advisors, as the two most populated townships.
You're going to add two now?
Plus the two rural ones.
Right.
Then we've got another committee, Nonprofits and Employers. That's also Jim Biggs sitting on that one. Two council members to be determined, two citizens to be appointed, a nonprofit expert to be determined. Infrastructure and Facilities, Jeff Hood will be the commissioner, two council people, two citizens. Mike Novotny, our county engineer, and Ray Cloyd as non-voting advisors. The county government COVID health response, I will sit on, two council members, two citizens, a health department representative, and Rhonda, our HR director, Rhonda, I'm sorry, Rhonda Young, our HR director. And that rounds it out.
Yeah.
All of these committees would have to meet at least one evening or weekend for public input. Not saying that's the only chance for a public input, but they need to at least meet once.
Yeah, I would think that that's pretty much left up to the committee itself. I mean, if the committee, you know, we, we laid down that they have to meet at least this many times, but if the committee decides they want to meet...
They can meet more, isn't it?
Right, that's fine. So we have, we're going to stay a little fluent there, so.
Yep. I think that's about it.
Just need a motion, Scott?
Correct.
A motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a committee plan for ARP and Subcommittee Structure Adoption. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay, now we're going to move on to the proposed ARP ordinance for adoption, and I think, are we going to have, we have some presentations coming too? Is that where this is going to happen in here, Scott?
Yeah, wherever you guys want to hear those.
So do we want to open it up now, or do we?
Well, let me just, I guess I can set the...
Give a recap and then open it up?
Yeah, from the Thursday meeting, discussion meeting, there's been an ordinance that I have drafted that's in the Commissioner's Packet. It's the second proposed investment of American Rescue Act funds, Plan for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It has a revised schedule of Exhibit A. Exhibit A contains the COVID response, would be $25,000 for the behavioral health study, COVID response, responding to negative impacts, the $500,000 for township governments divided by population, for assistance to households and individuals, and/or assistance to small businesses and nonprofits negatively impacted by COVID. Also assistance to impacted industries, including tourism or outdoor activities, the $2.5 million for the completion of the Marquette Trail, and up to $1 million for eligible employees for premium pay. Each employee would be eligible for up to $4,000 in premium pay as determined by the council, which I believe, generally speaking, has been a public safety and/or law enforcement type individuals. But there are also a few others that were on the front line, such as juvenile detention, things like that. So that would be the first ordinance, would be repealed. This would be the new ARP ordinance. It needs to be the only thing approved. If this, if this Commissioner's body approves it, this would be the only things approved for appropriation of Council level.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We, do we want to, we need to open up a public hearing here before we do this, so I'm not going to take the motion. Um, okay, so now we're going to open up a public...
We can open up for discussion after the motion. That's normal.
Open it up now?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing now. There you go, it's open. And what we're going to ask you for is to come forward, give your name, your address, and specifically, if you could keep it to the four that are on the list today? Is it four or five?
Four.
Four, right? So, um, the floor is open. I think first, what we wanted to do, maybe before comment, we do have a couple presentations we'd like to give on a couple of these projects, so the public can maybe get a little bit more up to speed as to where we're at on these things. And I think the presentations we had were stormwater related and the National Park Trail. So what I'd like to do in the beginning here is, could we have, the National Park Service guys are here today, do you want to come up with Bob Thompson? Or, Bob Thompson's the head of planning and development. Bob's an avid biker. He's been working on this trail for how many years, Bob? 20?
12.
12, okay. Seemed like 20, right? Hey, Paul. How you doing? Welcome.
I also started work on this back in 2009.
2009, okay. So what we're going to do here is, we're just going to give a real brief presentation on what's going on at the Marquette Plan, which is the trail up on the north side on the lakeshore, up by the lakeshore on the National Park Service ground. I think you all re-know, just here, about a year ago, the National Park Service was designated as a true national park. So a lot of their funding and a lot of the things that they're doing now is changing. So I think with the double tracking going on and the close to a billion dollars that the state and federal government is injecting into that infrastructure up there, and being in the same proximity of the park and everything else, you know, big, big infrastructure projects like this need synergy. They need synergy from federal government, state government, local, to make it all work. We have that excitement, and we have all that in place right now. So for the timing of this trail, we feel it couldn't come at a better time, especially after a pandemic where you have 10 miles that you could go walk, run, or do whatever you want to on a bike or whatever. So just sort of laying the groundwork for where we've been on this, and now I'll turn it over and I'll quit talking. There you go, Bob.
I'm going to discuss about this within three phases of what we've actually been working on with this trail project. What you see up here is the overall trail. It starts, the western terminus is at Mineral Springs Road, the entrance into Dune Acres, and then it heads east, going all the way to the county line, which is US 12 there, and terminates where Michigan City has just developed their new trail, Singing Sands. So, next slide. Phase one is staying on the actual alignment that we have. This is on NIPSCO property, and we're calling it Phase one because this phase could be starting up with actual construction either December of this year, or probably late winter, maybe January, February into next year. We do have federal funding sitting on this. The engineering is almost complete on it. We had to go back in and dust off a few things because this is where pipeline projects put a halt on the project that we were doing. So we are looking at getting this going. This one sets and ready to go.
I'd like to point out too, Bob, real quick, that right where the Chesterton Station is, when this project was originally designed years ago and got the federal funding, it was only a single track. Well, now it's a double track. So now that bridge and everything, you need to add another track to get under that bridge. I think, from my understanding, I think NICD is now picking that portion of that bridge work and everything into the project, where now it's not part of the trail project. So, one of the good things is by a project going out over time, sometimes things change and things come to our side a little bit, so. But that, that's, that's being eaten up in the, in the big double tracking project because it's part of the rail system now, so.
Yes, Phase one does go from Mineral Springs Road up to the State Road 49 interchange. NICD is going to be doing a section of the trail underneath the 49 and connecting into where their trail goes into the station itself and also up to the state park. They're also going to be adding pedestrian safety facilities to separate the trains there from pedestrians using the trail. Okay, next slide, please. Phase two. This is the exciting part, in my opinion. We really worked with National Park Service here, Paul and Rafi, and figured out a way that we can get off of the NIPSCO right away and actually give the pedestrians and the users a national park feel for the trail. All of this is going through national park property on this particular phase right here. We do have a application into the Indiana Dunes, or, excuse me, into the Department of Natural Resources for the next level trails. We should find out the fate of this application come March or April. We're keeping our fingers crossed on that. I think things are looking rather good. We worked rather hard on this part, and it took us a while, but this is the last phase. What we're using here is actual trails that are through the national parks and some existing infrastructure of vacated roads that are through that. So we're actually going to be rebuilding the trail on some vacated roads in this location. Next slide, please. This is Phase three. This is the very last phase. We do have federal highway funding for this particular phase here. This is scheduled for construction in 2024. Engineering is proceeding on this particular phase right now. This will stay on the NIPSCO corridor and on the existing trail. This one, I spent a lot of time up there walking through, trying to find some old right away and old road beds to see if I can get it up off of the NIPSCO right away, but wasn't able to, and time, we had to get moving on this because of the timeline we have for federal funding on that. So that's an overview. I should, do want to put out one point on this. Paul, Rafi, myself, and others with the county, National Park, really worked with NIPG hard on this, and we were able to get, with all of these phases, we're going to get pedestrian crossings constructed at Mineral Springs Road, and also Kemel Road, where we do cross the NICD tracks for these trails. These are going to be separated trails from the roads. They're going to have separate warning systems for the trains and safety features going on that, and also another new feature, since it's a double track, is also pay attention to the other line, second train is coming, safety type features on that. So we really worked hard with NICD on that. NICD, you know, I have to be thankful, you know, working with the railroad, they were fairly quick to respond on this. So with that, I asked Paul Labovitz, our superintendent here with the Dunes National Park, to, you know, speak on what this trail means for the national park.
Thanks, Bob. I wanted to say thanks to the Commissioners in Porter County for the great partnership we have with Bob and Mike and the team of folks that are really working hard to make this even better place to live and work, so, thank you. And I say that in the context of this trail because this, the Calumet Trail is a piece of this larger Marquette Greenway that will connect Michigan and Illinois. And we look at this, completion of this project, as a major change for the next century of how people will use the Indiana Dunes National Park and how it will transform the park from what is perceived as a beach destination to a year-round destination. And to be a little selfish, for those of us who live and work here, it's kind of a cool thing to have in your neighborhood, and then the economic impact of the folks who will come here as visitors to enjoy it and maybe leave a little money behind. So we just got some news last week that we are in the top 25 most visited national parks in the country. And if you do the math and you add in the state park visitation, which we did not, we're the top 10. And so when you think about what that means for us, again, we're, we can enjoy the park every day, but we have people who are coming here from all over the world to experience what we have come to take for granted as neighbors. So the, the value of the completion of the Marquette Greenway vision, that's been decades in the making, you're probably under soldier involvement, this has been, it's been, you know, 100 years, a century of progress, right? And so these things take a long time, but we're on the verge of actually seeing it happen. And then when we, when we go out there and enjoy it and see people enjoying it, we will realize that this was something really wonderful, that this is what we're put here to do with being entrusted with public resources. So the quality of life impacts for us, the environmental conservation and preservation impacts for the wildflowers and the things that live along this corridor, but even almost as important is the economic impact of this trail on all of us and all we do, I think will be fabulous. And so, Porter County leads the way. Thank you for your investment and your diligence in, in working with us, because sometimes we're not that easy to work with, your Uncle Sam. But we're, we're with you and we're, we're piecing this together, and I look forward to the ribbon cuttings and riding our bikes and walking on this and watching kids learn how to ride their bikes on this trail for the next 100 years. So thank you.
And I would just like to thank you in our meetings that we've had about, you know, when we decided to move off the Calumet easement, that was a big discussion. But I'm particularly proud of the fact that in an area that you want to environmentally protect for the rest of its life, that we went in and figured out a way to build a trail by using existing roads where it didn't open us up to the environmental impact, which would have taken another three years to get the trail done. But I just like the way that we're going, I, I think we're going about it the right way, for the environment, to get the trail up and get it going, because I think this is a trail that we can add to and build on to for years. There's, just in walking things with you guys and the ideas when we were walking, all that stuff, it's just, I think the future is bright for that area up there, and I just, I'm excited about it. I'm excited to play a small part in it, and I think this board is too, not speaking for the others, but thank you for your work and your help and for coming out today.
No, it's, and again, Rafi, my colleague, who's done a lot of the legwork, and Bob and his team, it's, you know, to your point, if we could have done it in three years, I'd have lost a lunch bet on that one, I know it. So, yes, you're exactly right. We're going to be on this trail on our bikes and pieces of it in a year.
Yep.
So that's pretty cool.
That's what we're trying to get to.
Yeah.
So, thank you for all your help.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for coming in today.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rafi. Thanks, Bob. Next up, we have Mike Novotny. Mike is our county engineer, and Mike's been our county engineer since its inception, the department's inception, six years now. And Mike's going to sort of talk about some of these drainage projects that we had had in the original plan and that were taken out, but we wanted to give a little bit more shine on these projects and sort of allow people to understand that they haven't been following the county government in the last three or four years. These have been projects that have been bubbling and coming forward ever since, since then. So we just got to the point where we're here to now, so we're going to have Mike give us some engineering explanations of what's going on on these three projects. So welcome, Mike.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure, sure.
I'd like to welcome the BU students that are here today, and I see two people just standing back there. If you want to take a second and come up, there's some seating up here.
Further, closer to the front. Yeah, you don't have to stand. We're boring.
We may be here a while. Not trying to embarrass you, just don't want you to pass out back there. Okay, sorry.
No, that's, that's good talk. Thank you, Mike.
I appreciate the opportunity. So, yeah, I'm glad to have the chance to speak this morning about the work that we've been doing in stormwater management since the department opened in 2016. When we opened our doors, we relied on previous studies, particularly the 2010 County-Wide Comprehensive Drainage Plan, which had identified 2,200 stormwater and drainage problems across the county. Some of significant importance, some not, you know, some rear yard, I have standing water, I can't mow my grass type problems. But we had our work cut out for us from day one. And since we've opened our doors, we've been exploring, assessing, and evaluating our existing infrastructure, as well as collecting 300 to 400 additional concerns or complaints, some of which are repeats per year. So that universe of problems out there with regards to our stormwater infrastructure, it's a significant undertaking. We have about 600 miles of stormwater infrastructure that we're responsible for. That includes, if you start in South County, our large regulated drains, our open ditches down there. But that also includes drain tiles that originally served agricultural areas. Now they've been tasked with draining residential areas as well for minor subdivisions and individual lots that have been developed over the years. And then we have lots of storm sewer and detention basins, so urban stormwater infrastructure as well, some of which we've come to find has not been built, designed that well, built that well, or necessarily maintained that well or at all since it was put in. So as we, as we started to wrap our heads around all the issues that we had in the county to tackle, mind you, we do, yes, we, this is all paid for by the county stormwater user fee. Typical single-family residential home pays $120,000. Typical single-family residential home pays $120 a year. Collectively, everybody that pays into that fund generates about $3.8 million of revenue a year. I'm proud to say 75% of that, plus or minus, goes directly back into work on our stormwater infrastructure. So that includes, it includes about $1 million a year for operations, maintenance, and construction, but also over $1 million a year for debt service for the improvements we've already made in our top priority area of Old South Haven. So I wanted to talk a little bit about prioritization of projects because this is where Jeff mentioned, you know, the projects that were originally named in the ordinance, those were named in there as an outgrowth of the ongoing conversations that we have with the Board of Commissioners, the Stormwater Management Board, as well as the county council, as we've got some significant studies that are wrapping up. And we know we have a significant liability out there, well beyond what our $1 million a year of construction and maintenance budget can accommodate. So we've got to prioritize, right? So just up in front of you is what we typically use to evaluate and prioritize projects. There's 12 criteria. I won't go into detail on any of them, but essentially it's applying what you might call common sense to diagnosing the problems that exist out there. Which are the worst? Where are they? What are they affecting? Are they affecting structures? Are they affecting roadways? Or are they just affecting somebody's backyard? How severe are they? Do they cause significant property damage? Do they wash roadways out? Does that then incur, you know, expenses on the fee payers? How often do they occur? How long do they occur? What's the size of the area affected? Is it just one house or an entire subdivision? And then some of the other ones listed there, obligation, is it a public or private infrastructure to begin with? Is it a longstanding problem that's been around for 20 years that maybe promises were made in the past that we'd get something done and nothing's been done to this point? So all those play a role into how staff evaluates these potential projects, these problems out there. And then that information's fed directly to our boards and then decisions are made on which projects get moved forward to construction. So Kurt, if you would move to the next slide. I wanted to just talk about three projects briefly this morning that because of the prioritization process that we had targeted for ARP funds. As I mentioned earlier, Old South Haven was identified really as our top priority using those criteria that I just discussed. An old subdivision started being developed in the early 1960s. The pipes were, the storm sewers were beyond their life expectancy. We had major flooding and drainage issues, property damage occurring there. So we've already taken that on head-on and accomplished a lot of work out there. The next sort of big problem areas that we identified were Shorewood Forest and Greater South Haven subdivisions, which include three other subdivisions in the Old South Haven area, New South Haven, Salt Creek Valley Commons, and Coventry, which are a little newer than Old South Haven but have similar problems. So we undertook studies to identify where those problems existed, how severe they were, again, to inform those criteria and pick particular projects within these locations that need to be addressed to address drainage issues, stormwater management, flooding issues that exist out there. So there's Shorewood Forest on your screen. I'm going to talk about Shorewood Forest because we targeted this one, at least the high priority projects within the subdivision for ARP funding. We are wrapping up a study, a detailed study of the stormwater infrastructure serving the subdivision. So there's a snapshot of reports across the subdivision from 2010 forward. Many of these folks have, you know, repeatedly suffer from drainage issues, stormwater management issues. Four categories on there, everything from failing pipes to ravine erosion type issues to street and yard or structure flooding. So red, I guess the red kind of indicates where you've got significant property damage occurring. And the rest of them are, I guess, lesser damages in nature, but all a significant enough nature where they need some attention. Shorewood is an interesting blend of gray infrastructure, we call it in the stormwater world, which is basically pipes, storm sewer structures, pipes, take the water away, put it in a detention basin before it moves further downstream. They also have a lot of green infrastructure, which we consider natural or built stormwater features that sort of mimic the hydrologic processes in the environment. And that's mostly the ravines because of the terrain out there, the ravines were used to convey stormwater management. The split is listed on the screen. There's about 28,000 feet of pipe and about 26,000 feet of ravines that really make up the Shorewood Forest stormwater management system. What you see at the top is the, a general assessment of the condition of the pipes. We sent storm sewers, televising cameras through all of the storm sewers, well, about 85% of them. And you've got about 30% of those pipes in poor condition. Those are generally in the older parts of the subdivision, started being developed in the early 1970s, to about 25% in moderate condition that need attention sooner rather than later. Poor condition, I would say needs attention immediately. And then good condition, you've got less than half is in good condition at this point. And that's part of our job is keeping those pipes in good condition through proper operation and maintenance as well. So we've got about 50, more than 50%, a majority of the storm sewers out there that need attention sooner rather than later, and some need immediate attention, those in poor condition. The other point I wanted to make on this slide is that nearly every single ravine has been significantly impacted by downcutting, widening, and erosion. And Kurt, on the next screen, I have a couple of shots of that. In the lower right-hand corner, that storm sewer used to be buried. That would have been the original outfall there. And then down below that, if you continue downstream, there's significant erosion, a canyon forming down below that. In the upper left is an example. Some of the ones that are more significant, the pictures don't do them justice because you don't have anything for scale, but that's a 12-inch pipe there. There's about six feet of erosion that have occurred directly below that outfall. And erosion's a natural process, but when we discharge concentrated stormwater runoff at the top of an erosional feature like ravine, it accelerates that process. So the sediment load from these ravines is substantial, significant impacts Lake Louise within the subdivision. And the HOA there is undertaking a significant project and process to address that issue within the subdivision. But the sediment also translates downstream and impacts, this is tributary to Salt Creek, impacts Salt Creek as well. So I feel like we, the county, the property owners, Shorewood Forest, have a responsibility to address this erosion issue, not just address the gray infrastructure, but address the green infrastructure as well because of the impacts it has on the natural environment. Kurt, if you would move forward. So the study has identified 15 high priority projects, again, ranked and evaluated according to those criteria that we discussed earlier. With, between these discrete projects and the more programmatic recommendations like fixing the ravine erosion, the, my estimate of our project need out there, our money need to address these issues is about $30 million, okay? If you would move forward one more. So I want to talk a little bit, there's a lot of those discrete projects are more pipe, the gray infrastructure. I wanted to talk about our green infrastructure approach. So this is what's known as a regenerative conveyance system. It was developed, a technique developed in the coastal plain of Maryland where you have stormwater rolling off the Piedmont and dropping down to the coastal plain. So very similar terrain to our moraines here in Porter County. The way we're going to go about fixing these ravines is to apply this technology. It uses, again, mimics the natural environment, infiltration, storage, evapotranspiration to safely convey, but allow that stormwater infrastructure, that stormwater to infiltrate into the ground and head back it up into the atmosphere as it makes its way down these ravines. So it's a combination of large boulder-type material, sand material, smaller cobble, and then a lot of vegetation in order to, when you get small storm events, everything's going to go in the ground. During large storm events, everything's going to pass over the top, okay? So that's Shorewood. Kurt, if you would move forward one. So I wanted to, I brought that one up because there's significant needs, but it's a nice blend of gray and green infrastructure needs, being sensitive to our role as a steward in the environment for protecting water quality and trying to address water quality issues. Another, this is a longstanding priority project that was targeted for ARP funding. This is the North Simpson Drain. To give you some, there's not roads labeled here, but that's the fairgrounds right in the middle of the shot. 49 runs from north to south along the bottom of your screen, and then Division Road kind of runs right through the middle of this exhibit. That's the watershed for the North Simpson Drain. It's a drain tile that drains the fairgrounds, portions of the city of Alperezo, including the Pratt Paper Plant, and then agricultural land. And this was all agricultural. That's why the drain was originally built. It's been tasked with now managing all these rooftops and impervious surfaces and for, Kurt, if you would move forward, for many years now, we've known that this drain, so right in the middle of that screen, it's hard to make out, but that red dashed and solid line, that's the alignment of the drain. For many years now, we've known that this drain has been in need of reconstruction. It's inadequate. It was built to handle agricultural land use. Now it's been tasked with, again, handling urbanized development, lots of rooftops and parking lots, and it's in poor condition. Concerns about the condition of this drain tile were brought up as early as 1999 and perhaps before, as this area was being targeted for industrial development. This is a headwater area of Parker Ditch, which is a sensitive environmental corridor. We try to keep it that way. It does have a regulated drain movement, but a lot of wetlands that are well-connected to that regulated drain. So a lot of floodplain storage, a lot of nice impacted wetlands in terms of ecological health, but the wetlands, the backbone is still there. So those could be enhanced. And that's tributary to Salt Creek. So this is all headwater sensitive environmental area. A 2004 study recommended reconstruction of the drain, along with implementation of green infrastructure practices within the watershed. We talked about that in Shorewood, right? Infiltration, evapotranspiration. Nothing was ever, nothing ever came of that. No one acted on that recommendation. 2017 study also recommended reconstruction of the drain. Time has come to reconstruct this drain. The agricultural lands there have suffered for many years, but this is leading to standing water for long periods of time in the fairgrounds.
And a high water table.
A very high water table, standing water in the fairgrounds area of Pratt Paper. It needs to be reconstructed. And the project we're envisioning would not only include reconstruction of the drain tile, the gray infrastructure, but enhancement to the Parker Ditch corridor, the wetland area, working with the property owner, so making this a gray, but also green infrastructure type practice or project. The last one that I wanted, and this, this is what I've been dealing with for the last few days now. This is Carriage Hills subdivision. So this is another possible priority project that perhaps went unnamed in the original thought process behind the original proposal, but funding was set aside for issues just like this because we have those hundreds of miles of infrastructure out there that things can go wrong, that we don't know could go wrong because we haven't, we haven't looked at the storm sewer yet perhaps. But this is Carriage Hills, Jackson Township, 500 East is on the east boundary of that shaded polygon. It's just north of 900 North. Kurt, would you move one ahead? The subdivision was constructed in the early, well, late 90s, 99, 2000. The, so not, it's not old. We expect to get 50 years to 75 years out of our storm sewer systems. We're only about 20 years old here, a little more than that. The construction plans indicate that the storm sewer serving the subdivision was constructed in the wrong location with incorrect material and incorrectly sized pipe. So this is not a commentary, not pointing fingers, but it's a commentary on the foresight that the Board of Commissioners, the council, in terms of creating our Stormwater Management Board, our department, not only are we going back into the environment, the county, to address problems like this, but we're reviewing subdivisions carefully when they come in for approval and throughout construction to make sure that we don't have issues like this pop up where pipe is where it shouldn't be, is the wrong size in some cases, in the wrong location, and is poorly constructed. Because based on what we've seen, we got involved in Carriage Hills in mid-2019. We've done some point repairs of storm sewer that has caused sinkholes. We videoed the entire storm sewer at that time in August, September 2019. Certainly the condition was poor and needed to be reconstructed, but it's only 20 years old. So we were stretching the life, doing point repairs, expected we could get more life out of it. However, on Friday, the condition of the pipe led to a sudden catastrophic pipe collapse. So Kurt, would you move forward one? These are some, drumroll please. So, yeah, these are photos from what occurred on Friday afternoon. The pipe runs under the homeowner's driveway here. The pipe collapse caused sudden rush of sediment into the pipe, sucked all that from down below the driveway and the driveway collapsed. So you have one car all the way in, one car kind of the way in. Fortunately, no one was injured, but we have, we have our work cut out for you here. So first step was to get the cars out of the way, crane those out of the way. We, over the weekend, figured out what materials we would need, started acquiring those. And as of Monday, as of yesterday, we had dropped off 40 feet of pipe, pipe bands, ready to put this thing back together. But that's just going to be a Band-Aid. This, again, this whole storm sewer structure system needs to be reconstructed because of the condition that it's in. And it's unfortunate that there was only 20 years of life that we got out of it, but that's, that's the job of the Engineering Division, our stormwater group of the county in terms of taking care of all the public infrastructure that's out there. When something goes wrong, we have to have the funding to be able to address it, so.
When we started this board, our first project was South Haven because we studied it and the things we found out there, I mean, sinkholes were a very common problem up there when I first arrived here. It was some of the first calls I started getting, we got a sinkhole. Well, these sinkholes are 25 feet from the front door. Where do these kids play? I mean, it, you know, I mean, what I'm trying to say is that, you know, sometimes we get criticized up here for being too infrastructure oriented and Porter County is, county government is infrastructure. That's what we do. But this is not, this is not something that we decided that we're just going to go do. This was necessitated. We were at the end of the line. We were at the end of the road here. And so obviously, we know how to handle sinkholes. We know how to mitigate them, but we want to get out of that business real quick. So this, I'm just, we're trying to show everybody from a county's perspective, the impact and how far behind this county is on trying to get their stormwater infrastructure back up, up to speed. And it's a very hard infrastructure to assess because it's all buried and it's all underground. So out of sight, out of mind, right? But now our department is up there, we're popping lids, we're getting into manholes, we're getting down in there. But there's a lot of work that needs to happen before that. So I just wanted to point that out real quick that this, and the other thing is, is this board, we don't handle stormwater meetings in this board. There's a whole nother board that meets for stormwater, the county surveyors involved in that board too. And they meet, and that's where a lot of these projects are discussed and funded and mitigated. And so if you never see that and you come to the commissioners' meetings looking for that information, that whole activity is happening in a separate board, separate meeting, separate funds. They can't be commingled. It's all got to be towards stormwater infrastructure. So just little, little housekeeping, I just, while I had it open on a public record, I just wanted to sort of give a little bit of a, some history as to where we've come. So, sorry, Mike.
No, no.
And Mike, before you go on, if you could just take one step back and explain why currently, what processes and things we have in place that at this point in time, a subdivision wouldn't be allowed to progress? So in other words, a subdivision that comes in here in 2022.
It's not going to be happening in 20 years.
Right. What's different now than it was 20 years ago?
Yeah, let's, let's talk a little bit about the life, yeah, the life cycle of a project, public or private. In this case, it would be a private development project, right? So it starts with sound design and engineering. From the county's perspective, we have solid stormwater standards in place, including a design manual, as well as design and construction standards that apply to the construction of roads and storm sewer, any utilities within the subdivision, okay? So that, that process begins when the developer's site design professional is putting together the construction plans for their development. We review those, those plans come to the Engineering Division, we review those plans, sometimes exhaustively, and I get accused of being obstructionist and slow. But look, the reason that I am is because my job is to protect the public health and safety. We can't have things like this happening. So we do our due diligence during that review of the construction plans, make sure that all of those construction standards, which are in line with good and accepted construction practices, are included on those construction plans, okay? But it doesn't stop But it doesn't stop there because you can have all the plans and standards that you, in the world that you want, and they can be the best, but if those don't get implemented during construction, you're falling short. So we usually, at that point, the developer's site design professional bows out, the developer's not paying them anymore to look at the site or do much unless they have to. The contractor, the developer's contractor and subcontractors then take over. So from, from the start of construction, we do a pre-construction conference with the developer and their contractor for every project. We review the construction plans in terms of what's going in, when it's going to go in, how it's going to go in, and we set the expectation that we're going to be out here not all, not all day, every day, but regularly to check on progress. And then throughout construction, we have inspectors, could use a few more, that get out on site and observe the construction to make sure that it's taking place in accordance with what's shown on the plans and in those construction documents.
Don't bury it until we tell you.
And we don't, and we don't let them backfill until we say it's okay, right? So that we have, have eyes on it at least. So then that process continues. Storm sewer, you know, underground infrastructure goes in first, grading occurs, storm water ponds, all that. Then the roads get built, same process for roads. We observe construction, we proof roll, we'll test density if we need to, we observe the paving process, we'll test density on the paving process if we need to. So that's all part of the QAQC through, through construction, okay? Then once those, those get, all those public improvements get substantially complete, so the roads can be used, the storm sewers can be used, we require the storm sewers to be video inspected. So we have not an only idea from what they look like on the surface, but from in the pipe as well. We have as-built plans that come in, and then the developer has to provide us with at least a three-year maintenance guarantee on everything that, hey, we're going to take care of any defects in the workmanship, anything that might pop up for three years. And we carefully look at it throughout that period before the commissioners finally accept that, that public infrastructure as, as public infrastructure, where then the responsibility is going to be on the county and really the fee payers or the taxpayers to take care of it from then on. So it's, throughout that entire life cycle, we have to be involved, and we are involved in making sure that things are designed right, that they're constructed right, and then at least initially, that they're operating and are maintained correctly before we actually say everything's good and we'll, we'll take it from here. So that's the process.
And how long have we been, we've had that process since the storm water board.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I, I joke sometimes that it was a little bit of a, you know, sleight of hand that I got played when I, when I took this job. I was going to be the storm water program director, then I became the county engineer, and then I saw, look, the plan commission needed help with this process. So from, from early, from late 2016 to really early 2018, we sort of developed the staff, the resources, the, the framework, the program to allow that review inspection process. And it's still developing, we still have improvements we can make, but that's, yeah, basically over the last three years, we've been developing that and implementing that, that process in full. Really, since the first, we, the first major subdivision in many years came to be in early 2018. So really, at the time, the development interest really started picking back up and economics allowed it to pick back up. We, we've had our, our processes in place.
Yeah, and then one of the other things you might want to add is that we actually have, what, three or four engineers on staff now in our county storm water department, and we're actually now doing our own drawings.
Yes.
Where we can mitigate and do our own engineering drawings in-house, which saves the county a tremendous amount of money. A lot of these are rural-type projects or big rural subdivisions that we can do them ourself. So we're trying to add value and bring more, bring more work back. So we're constantly looking at the amount of work versus the overhead to make sure that we're, you know, our goal is to put as much money in the ground rather than overhead. And that's something that we're, we, we are constantly talking about.
Thanks for bringing that up, Jeff, because yeah, I wouldn't be able to do what I do if I didn't have a very talented group, but small group of staff around me.
Very small.
And, and that's right. And I, I take a lot of pride in the fact that we do do the majority of our design work in-house. We do the majority of our, well, all of our plan review work in-house and inspection work in-house. The folks that work in the department, they're Porter County residents.
Yep.
It's, we consider it to be ours. So we're, we're looking out for, for what's ours and we, we treat it that way. Not to say that consultants couldn't do the technical aspects of it, but I think there's something that gets lost in translation when you hire an outside gun to come in and, and help you out. They don't have that investment, that vested interest in taking care of what's, what's ours, right?
Yep. Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from Mike, from the board? We'll keep it moving. Thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it. Hope I didn't take too much.
No, hey, information is important, so I'm okay with that. Okay, so now we got, we're done with our presentation, so now we're going to, we're going to, the public hearing is still open, so anybody wants to come forward and speak about these four items, come forward, give your name and your address, and we'll take it from there.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me okay? My name is Walt Breitinger. My residential address is 608 Academy Street. I feel it's more important to recognize that I live on Mother Earth, and many of the things that you've brought up today, I think show a major level of respect for what's needed to try to make a lot of changes today. I wanted to thank you and congratulate you, and especially, I think, your choice of Vicki Urbannick to lead the team, or whatever her title's going to be, in charge of the steering committee, I think that's going to be. And I have watched, I've searched throughout the country for others that have put on presentations and done videos on how to follow the laws, and I think that we have someone that's going to make sure that we do recognize the importance of what the government has already instructed us to do. I'd also like to thank you so much for bringing Bob Thompson up. I know there are probably people here that wonder, how can we justify spending over $2 million on the Marquette Trail, which may not seem initially to fit into the program? I think some people here know, but maybe the majority don't know that there's a huge amount of federal matching, that if we don't grasp the opportunity to build that Marquette Trail now with our $2 million or 2.2, that we would lose twice as much that the federal government is going to contribute. So for those that don't recognize or appreciate the importance of bike trails, I'll mention that that, it's a rare opportunity for us to get that federal money. The National Lector, I don't know if Paul Lebiewitz is still here. He left. I think that the opportunity to, to include input from the National Park is incredible, and I just love that, that you've involved him. And then, of course, I think some of you know it, I think, Mike Novatny and his, his work. I'm just delighted that you're able to hear a thorough presentation from him. So I know there have been a lot of debates that have gone on here, and I assume there will be more as this whole procedure proceeds, but I just want to say, and I'm not here representing any particular, I've never been appointed or elected from any of the environmental groups or conservation groups, but just on behalf, I know I'm often considered a tree hugger now, and you add the lakes, the ponds, the rivers and streams, to the extent that I represent them, I feel this is a, a major improvement that's been made. Thank you.
So to be clear, the four, the, the new ARP ordinance, the four items that would be potentially passed by the commissioners would be the $25,000 to the behavioral health study, the $500,000 available to township government or the trustees for assistance to households and individuals or to small business, and then also the 2.5 million to the Marquette Trail, and up to $1 million for the premium pay for the public safety employees. Those are the four items that would be for today's ordinance. The original ordinance would be void, and this would be the new ordinance with the new request, subject to the council's appropriation. And I didn't mean, somebody asked, I could tell somebody mouthed me that they didn't know which four, so that's why I said it, but we're still in a public meeting, so whoever, or public hearings, so whoever would like to talk, please come up.
You got someone coming over here?
Sure, that's fine.
My name is Paul Schreiner. I live in, at 1755 Lawndale Drive, which is in the county. And was your engineer's name Mike?
Michael Novatny.
I was real impressed.
So were we.
Yeah, you guys are lucky to have him. I learned a lot more about storm water management than I ever knew or probably wanted to know.
People say that all the time about us up here, Paul, so.
And, and I don't want to come across as critical because I'm not. Everything he said is worth doing and has been worth doing for a long time. I mean, it seems like we were talking about things that were, came up in the 90s.
Yes.
We're in a real unique place right now because of this, this federal legislation. Porter County is not a poor county. We need to take care of what we've got. And I'm, that means I support everything that Mike talked about. The question is, what should these funds be used for? And certainly, some of them can go for that. I think that's reasonable and fair. But the design of the legislation was to address those most harmed by the pandemic. None of those folks are sitting here. They're all the poor people in the county. And I just want, without any, I mean, you, you probably know that I have a, a request in, I'm not going to speak to that at all. I think we need to remember, let's not rebuild the county. We can rebuild the county all the time. This is a special allocation of funds that need to be used for those people most harmed. By the way, I thoroughly enjoyed and was educated by your presentation the other day. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Someone else popped up now. Yep.
We hope to petition later in one of your committees for water quality and drainage and, and it affects wildlife, but it also affects roads on the north end of the county. So I want to address that today. But I want to agree with what the first two gentlemen said because helping fix old infrastructure is part of the process, it's in there, but it should be benefiting the public when you have the parks here and the trail. That is measurable in terms of encouraging the public to understand the larger issues of that whole corridor. If Standard Oil and US Steel had the qualities of what we look at now, that park would be 10 times bigger. 50-year anniversary of the Port of Indiana tore up Howling Hills. They just brought in the bulldozers, got rid of the sand, and who knows, made mason jars out in Muncie, okay? And a lot of roads. So you're looking at it with different eyes, and even Mike Novatny, who has helped us, our own chapter of Isaac Walton, many times, and we consider him a friend and a hard worker, and he gets back to you, even if you're just a little group. So I encourage you to keep looking at beyond these little 25,000 things for, $25,000 to help the people with mental problems. You don't have a mental hospital. There's things of the past, they've thrown more and more people on the street. And there's plenty of infrastructure in other cities in the county that should be taken care of as well, and I don't see that in any, any of the things you're talking about today. And at a certain point, when does a county bailing out private, private developments who are well-heeled? I mean, South Haven, that's a different story. Blue collar, built horrible from the day, day one. Why was that ever approved? Because it was. But some of these other subdivisions are twice, three times, 10 times the assessed valuation of a typical household in South Haven. Maybe you need to rethink that and put some money helping the general public. It's not easy for the general public to even be at this meeting, 10 o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday. Now you have a nightly meeting with the county council, you better hurry your ass over if you're in Chicago. I worked in Chicago for 40 years. It was a rare day where I could come to one of these meetings, okay? I said the same thing when they were working with the South Shore. They put their meetings at 8 o'clock in the morning. They didn't want the public at the South Shore meetings, that's for sure. So if you're opening this up with these committees, I think maybe this larger look should also go back to some of the committees because you decided these things with yourselves, with a select group of people that know all the different boards and everything, but the public really is not looking all this. We're re-looking at it today. It's a good advertisement for the good work of the Drainage Board, but I think you need to open that up too, so that the public feels that they're fully informed, not just repeating what is known by the, the workers that get the county government done. Because the vast majority of the public don't have the slightest idea what we're talking about today. And I think it needs to be opened more for everyone, and these committees are a first step, an excellent, excellent first step. And you're not doing it sleepily or sloppily. That's to be commended. But let's keep everything out in the open. Yes, it's hard to work with the public. That's a given. And as public officials, you knew the job was dangerous when you took it. And this is generational, this money. It may never happen again in our lifetime, and we want it for our children and grandchildren and other people that we be moving to the county that we have no idea who they will be. So it is a unique situation that Porter County has this affluence, but where is our largest to help those at the bottom? And where is our largest to the public to keep them totally informed of what we, as knowledgeable people that make good decisions, we hope, on their behalf? Thank you.
Sir, 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 what's your name?
I'm sorry, Mary Brown. I live in Valparaiso, 203 Harrison.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for actually putting the money towards the mental health study. I know I've been advocating for that, and I applaud you guys for approving this and this section of the ARP money. I think with the study, once we get it done, God willing, we see what areas we need to work on, maybe the, the second tranche of the money will be used for things that the committee can, you know, give you guys recommendations to use. So I just want to tell you, thank you very much for, for doing that. Thank you.
Oh, we got someone over here. You can get up here and queue if you want. You can get in queue.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Reiner, 408 Lafayette. I know that this is a discussion about the first phase, and I think that these projects are valuable, but to echo what Paul was saying about keeping in mind our workforce and the people that are needing to skill up to be part of these new jobs that are going with the infrastructure that you've been addressing today, I think that there is room for both in Part Two and Part One to look at what is needed for people who need to get training and education so that they can fill some of these better-paying jobs that are coming this way as a result of this money. So we'll talk more about the second one later, but this is for first one. So thank you.
Yep.
I'm going. I have a couple questions. All right, so I know the Opera House is still a big thing on my head. Do you feel that the Opera House is more important than these other programs? The $25,000 that's going towards the study, well, I guess I don't know what that study is, but I feel you get a lot more for the mental health aspect, a lot of money that could be allotted. There's also the homelessness that needs to be addressed. I don't think that's ever really been brought up. I mean, maybe I missed it, but.
We're going to the committees, and that's where.
No, I'm just, just bringing up just some certain things that I'm just kind of wondering if you guys have ever thought of. I don't think it's funny, I just honestly think these are things that, you know.
To be clear, the $500,000 to township government is for, exactly for the assistance to households and individuals in the first batch year. So this $500,000 is available to township government, assuming this gets passed today and the council appropriates. for the assistance to households and individuals in the first batch here. So this five hundred thousand dollars is available to township government, um, assuming this gets passed today and the council appropriates it. This would be, this would be available, uh, for the township trustees to utilize for poor relief, uh, whether that's for food or whether that's for housing. Um, and that's what this five hundred thousand for the trustees by population is designated for. That's why it's for assistance to households and individuals.
And that's helpful. Thank you. That's, I mean, things like that you get a question about. Um, as in the trail. Um, how far does the trail go from? You, you were saying from.
From Chesterton to the Michigan City line.
From Chesterton to Michigan City.
About nine miles.
Okay, now, I live here in Valpo, so basically the only way to get there is to drive, correct? Okay, so there's no connection wise. And do you know how current, like, um, how much is the trail being used at this point? I mean, is it, is it active? I mean, do you see a lot of people on it all the, sometimes?
There's parts of the existing trail now that are.
It's what?
There's part of the existing trail that is underwater right now. Um, so it's, it's, that was where we got to the point of do we go in and redo it? Or do we, and then there was a gas line that was built underneath it. There's power lines over above. When NIPSCO came in and put the gas line in about four years ago, they came back to us and said, in order to build a trail on top of this gas line, you basically have to build a trail now that is like built like an interstate.
How long had that?
And then the cost went hoop, up through the roof. So that's when we started pivoting and started looking at different options to move it off the trail, to make it more economical, to make it move inside and out of the national park too. We, we wanted to have that interaction. So that's, that's how we got to where we got.
Okay. How long had that, uh, part of the trail been underwater?
Yeah, parts of it where they came in and.
Right, how long had it been that way?
That's probably been a couple of years.
A couple of years.
I would think, yeah. Yeah, we've been studying this ever since then, so.
Years.
Yeah, years.
Years.
Okay, cool. All right, awesome. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let everybody know too, she brought up a very good point about the study. Um, you know, we're hoping to get that study soon because what we'd like to do is take that study and then disseminate it to that committee. So we have working, we have a working document that will sort of guide that committee. Um, so that, that was one of the other reasons why that was put forward in the beginning. So we had a document that we could work off of. So anybody else? Sir? Oh. You got him fast. I'm like, ooh.
She got me on age.
Yeah.
Hey, how is everyone? Thanks for meeting and having the public here. Uh, I'm Jim Burns. I'm the executive director of Family Focus. We bought the Focus building, uh, by Bender's Jewelers. And, uh, I can't tell you how much flooding problems we've had because the tiles were old and we put thousands of dollars into our parking lot with drainage problems and it's just been a nightmare. But, you know, we had some work done. There was a lot of roots, you know, but that's.
High water table in there too.
Yeah, right. And that creek runs by us. People come fishing over there. Anyway, um, my second point is, we're a nonprofit. We've been around thirty-two years. Uh, we serve eleven Indiana counties. But we, we work with, what we do is home-based family preservation. So we work with our families and the homes that have been child abuse and neglect. We do home-based case work. We do visitations, supervised visitations. We do parent education, father engagement, a lot of services. But most of our referrals come from child protective services, whether it's been allegations of abuse or neglect. What is lacking is prevention funds to keep the families from going into the DCS system. So, uh, I'm speaking for myself and our organization, but other nonprofits that want to help those in the community that need it most. Um, we're getting involved with domestic violence problems, uh, which are soaring because of the pandemic. Um, during the pandemic, we had to do a lot of virtual visits with our families. Thank God we have that. Uh, we needed demonodotes at risk families. So there was a lot of expenses built into that to go virtual for a while. Um, so we applied for the PPP money. We did get PPP money, um, because we hired during the pandemic. We brought on eight more people. But now we're having a retention issue. So it's really hard to find master level people and people to do this work. So I just want to have your understanding of what we go through as nonprofits, uh, in this county and to our other counties too. So, thank you.
Thank you. We got, we got two coming up here.
Okay, I'm going first only because I was trying to get up last time. And, um, so I do appreciate, um, the four aspects that are being approved. Um, I do think those are all very important. And I, um, I do have a friend that lives right close to the trail and she was saying about the foot traffic that happens in the summer. So I do understand that concept and about, um, what they're dealing with with, because I know on the one forty-nine, when it does go into that area, it gets very crowded during the summertime. So having another, um, option is, um, very much appreciated. Um, with the funds, I will say, um, like I said, I do agree with the guy earlier and just reiterate that those funds being used for basic needs. Um, I mean, there's a lot of people that don't have enough, you know, food, water, even paying their NIPSCO bill right now is a struggle. Um, most of the elderly people in this community, and I don't, I'm not a social worker. I, I work in the healthcare field. But, um, if you're over the age of sixty-five, um, you mean, most people are living on Medicare, um, on a fixed income. Um, if you get COVID, um, a lot of times the recovery time just, and this is young people too, um, it takes like a good month just to get your energy back. Um, most people don't even have energy to, you know, cook their own dinner or, you know, take baths or showers if they're over, you know, elderly people. So I, I mean, finding a way to use these funds to help the, and again, if you're, if you've worked your whole life, um, they pretty much punish you where you, you know, can't get, um, people to come and help take care of you or even get a caretaker unless you pay out of pocket, unless you're a Medicaid patient. Actually, do they actually pay for any kind of caregiver to come assist with any kind of, um, home needs? So a lot of, um, people end up getting discharged from the hospital and they do not even have, you know, they're pretty much getting dropped off at home and they don't even have a way to cook their meals. They don't have a way to take a shower, even get their meds. So, um, I mean, like I said, these are some of the things, um, and like I said, these are elderly people that have worked their whole lives and then, you know, end up going through something like COVID or, um, you know, some other different things because of other, uh, coexisting issues and then on COVID on top of it. And they're not actually, they're actually being sent home because there's nowhere for them to go. They don't have family that's available locally to help take care of them. So like I said, I, I know these funds are, um, going to be used for a lot of different projects, but, um, really, you know, breaking it down to a lower level and making sure that these people are getting taken care of is, I do believe, the main purpose of the COVID relief funds. Um, in addition, I do encourage everyone to get involved with this process so our voices can be heard. And, um, you know, if we are able to make the meetings, please be informing other people in your community of what's going on here because it is hard to look at the, the video afterwards and sometimes always hear, um, all the different things that are happening. So other than that, um, I do appreciate you guys revisiting this and moving forward, um, in a more structured manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, Dwayne Davison. Um, like to first start, uh, start, start off with, uh, appreciate kind of a mulligan on this process where we just start over, pretend some things didn't happen, and then do it the right way. The right way being engaging the, uh, community, getting some committees, uh, stakeholders, some people with, uh, institutional knowledge, but some new folks in as well. Uh, so that much is, is appreciated. Uh, I'd like to speak to the two presentations and then after just kind of more general on the process. So anything that protects or enhances the environment, I'm certainly in favor of. So appreciate the, the two areas that were, uh, spoken about today. Um, Marquette Trail and Stormwater Handsments, uh, with the county engineer, uh, that was a very informative, um, presentation. Appreciate that. Um, it, it seems to me that a lot of this money is being spent though to correct previous wrongs. Uh, I'd, I'd love to see more money put up front to prevent that activity in the future. So, um, you know, some land is more valuable than others. If we've got a repairing corridor, a wetland, uh, bogged fence, which this whole region used to be filled with, uh, that's where we start, uh, because that's going to do the work for free versus trying to wrap our hands around, uh, engineering and conquering nature, as it were. So, uh, certainly like to have more protection and stringent rules and regulations. And I was heartened to hear that the, uh, county's engineer spoke to those issues. Um, as, as far as the process, just in general, um, you know, I'm, I'm speaking independently on this. I'm not part of any group and haven't, uh, um, spoken on this, this issue at all, uh, to date. But, um, you know, sometimes we, we entrust the day-to-day activities of government to you folks with little or no oversight. And sometimes, um, a situation occurs like this where people become more engaged in the process. And I think it was correct for the public to speak out and say, hey, this, this money is a little different this time. Um, it's not just average taxpayers', uh, money that's going to predetermined, uh, projects. This has got kind of a wide latitude of, of potential. So, um, again, I do appreciate the taking a step back and starting over. Um, it, I'm sure it wasn't easy for folks to do. Um, so, you know, democracy really can be messy. Uh, it's much easier for you guys to just decide on a project, right or wrong, and move forward. Uh, this part's a lot tougher to hear comments and suggestions, some of which support, uh, what you were hoping for, some, some against. But it, it's, it's needed and especially with this, uh, you know, with this money here. So, um, if the goal is to foster confidence, um, you, you've done the right thing here now. Uh, this is a lot of money. Thirty-three million dollars is, is something that we're not going to see for, for some time. Um, and so we've got to get it right. The optics are, are critical here. Um, so you, you don't have to marry us, but, you know, we would like to get engaged. Thank you.
To Baxter. Um, I live in downtown Valparaiso. And I'd like to diddle what everyone else has said here today. We do appreciate everything you've done and, um, what you've done so far. I just wanted to point out, having, uh, published a newsletter in Shorewood Forest, I do know that they have their own property manager association and each resident pays money into this fund. They also have their own utilities board. And I, I don't know if, no one's brought that up. Um, I do know they have a lot of money. So I, I kind of suggest that the public is aware of this fact and that you work with that, that board and, um, maybe have them put in some matching funds for what you're doing there. Um, it only makes sense. That's what the Property Owners Association is supposed to be doing. And part of what you're doing now is actually their job. So I just, I think a lot of people don't know about that and they really need to be aware of it. Thank you.
Well, to address that directly, the, the homeowners association does exist. They do have a committee. They do have quite a bit of funds and they are in fact dealing with the actual lake restoration portion all on their own, without any county participation.
Eight million plus.
Mr. Navatney, correct me if I'm incorrect, but I believe the presentation, uh, that you gave today, uh, was only in the portion of the, uh, of the stormwater system. That is only the county's responsibility.
That, that's correct. And the utility boards, there is water and sand, portable water and sanitary equipment, not, nothing to do with stormwater management.
In the lake restoration project, I, I know they were at Plan Commission, I believe. And I'm going to misquote the number, but I want to say maybe four million dollars is, or eight million dollars.
Yeah, between the, the construction of their giant, their settling pond where they have to pump all the dredge soils to give all that, so that time to sort of settle out and then the dredging operation. So I think, I think, I think it's over the five million, Jeff, maybe right there.
Plus, plus the, yeah. And of, of which we, we haven't even got a request to participate.
So the Property Owners Association is, it, it exists to care for the common properties. Uh, so they have a number of outlots and, and trails and things, but also the lake. Anything below the normal water level, the lake believes is their responsibility. And, and that's correct. They have not, they have not even, I'm just talking to the county about.
And, and, no, they, and we've had conversations with the POA. We've been meeting with them. But what this, what this project is doing is they're pumping out the entire lake. It, because it's filled in.
And it's our failing system.
And it's our failing system that's putting sediment in their lake. So we've divvied up the responsibilities with Shorewood and we've come to terms with who's doing what. And so what they're doing is they're going to be, I mean, they have to buy a piece of line.
Dredging, dredging the lake.
They are dredging the lake and then all that sediment's being pumped and then it's going to come back, the water will come back in. And so now you'll have a whole new clean lake. And if you saw those ravines that we were talking about, when Mike was talking about those ravines, that's the water that comes off the subdivision and feeds that lake. Well, when it's eroding, it's putting sediment back into the lake. And they just spent five million dollars cleaning it. So what, what, what our goal was, is that two point five that was targeted in the first ARPA plan was to give them money that if they started dredging, we could come in and do the restoration to the ravines immediately so they don't have any more sediment going into the lake. So we're trying to stop it, uh, right when it gets fixed, which we think is the highest impact that we could do there. So that was why, that was why that came up. Um, and the POA and us have been meeting. We've been very engaged in discussions. Um, so it's, it's sort of a joint project that we're working with them on. We have our responsibilities, which Mike showed you on the plan, ravines and, and gray infrastructure, and they have, they have the lake. So I hope I, Mike, I hope I hit that on the head.
In the past, there may have been blurred lines or questions about who is responsible for what part of our partnership is clarifying roles and responsibilities. So there's no longer blurred lines. Yeah, it was a joint, it's a joint effort.
Yeah, this was a subdivision that was taken over by the county thirty years ago. And there wasn't even a discussion or anything. It just happened. And so a lot of the easements, a lot of the documents, a lot of the who's on first, doesn't exist because it was all thrown out, the baby was thrown out with the bathwater, right? So what we've been doing is, you know, uh, putting all these lines of who does what. And we've been working through that and putting it all together painstakingly with their POA. And, and it benefits the county and it benefits those property holders out there too. So.
I think it's also important to note that they pay the stormwater fee to the county.
They pay like everybody else does. So, so they are part of the fee. They're part, they're a subscriber to that district. So, yeah, we have someone else coming up here.
Hi, Sheila Sweeney, Valpo. I'm sixteen oh six Carriage Drive. I just have a quick question and forgive my ignorance. I've only lived here six years. When I moved here, uh, I remember there was some talk about the sale of the hospital and then the money from the sale of the hospital. So what goes on with that? Talk to me like I'm a five-year-old. Thanks. I don't know. Is that a question that can be answered right now, like quickly or?
Of course. Um, we have a foundation set up through legislation. Um, we have quarterly meetings. We started off with.
About a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty million. Um, we use the interest. We are only allowed to use up to five percent. We have a spending policy that, uh, we use three point two five percent. The rest goes into principles for future generations. Um, we have quarterly meetings and they're always on our website. So, and they're in, they're usually five o'clock. So maybe a little easier to get to. Um, what else? I don't want to get into the weeds too much in this meeting, but, um, I'm happy to talk to you about it later too. Yeah.
I think we can say though, from when we got the bill passed and then the money's been invested in the last five years, the corpus is now what?
Like a hundred and ninety-five?
A hundred and ninety-five million. So we've grown it from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and ninety-five. And. And you know, we're just, it was a startup foundation and we wanted to protect the money first of all. So we now have it in a, we now have it in a form that we can act on. And you know, it's there and it's, it's making money. Last year, the county did a three million dollar paving program where we have 816 miles of roads and there's no way we can keep up with the paving and what we have with the way we're funded by the state and local. So last year, we did our worst 20 subdivisions, paved them, and that came out of hospital foundation money. So we're again, trying to use some of that money to sort of pick up where we're really behind on our infrastructure, just to try and get it back up to speed. But now all of our infrastructure is data-driven. All of our roads have been assessed. We're not, this isn't the good old boy, you call up somebody and you get your road done. This is all done quantitatively through data. We got engineers involved. So you know, there's, there's a lot of good things going there too on the foundation. But I think that's something that will set the stage for the county in future years to, you know, start using that a little bit more proactively. And now that it's set up and it's running and it has history, which usually you need for endowments to be able to go out and do things, you got to have history of where your investment strategies are. You know, that's what we've been slowly doing is building that foundation up, protecting it and getting it ready for the next, the next phase.
And before, not that we want to go into a long foundation discussion, but just so everyone's not misled, there is 185, 190 million dollars of principal, but there are legislative handcuffs on what can be utilized, how much can be utilized. So there is not a hundred million dollar pot of money that could just be spent. There would be a process to do that. And frankly, it would take a unanimous vote of the commissioners and the council, 10-0, to be able to invade that principal. In reality, the foundation is set up. It generates roughly 5.1, 5.3 million dollars a year. It has and it will continue. It is set up through with the smoothing part of the legislation so that the amount of money that we are taking off on a yearly basis is also, and this was obviously before our inflation spike, but it was targeted with the inflation at its normal rate. So that 20 years from now, 30 years from now, the money that that foundation is producing on a yearly basis has the same impact to those people at that time that it does now. So before that turns into a completely different conversation, there is, there are much more rules and things that impact that money. It's not just a pot of 100 million dollars sitting there. And ultimately, what it's probably doing, the easiest way to understand at this point, our local income tax portion for, the Porter County portion of that local income tax is almost the same or within a couple hundred thousand dollars of the same amount of money that that foundation is producing. So in all reality, it's probably saving us from us, at this point, it's being utilized from us, from this government having to contemplate doubling the local income tax rate here locally. So that money is being utilized and the way it is set up, it should be there for generations, if not forever. So there are more parts of that I just wanted to throw out there before it got misconstrued that there was another pot of money that's being divvied up. There isn't at this point. But that, it does exist and it is relieving, probably a living tree.
And that 5.1 million that we get out of the foundation goes towards funding government. And what is it that we're funding in there?
Jail medical. Jail medical.
Order start.
The not-for-profits.
The non-for-profits.
OE.
OE. And it also has.
E911.
911. Fund and the, your youth services bureau is getting money and they've been getting money from the county for, forever. That's an annual, so we're taking those three, four non-for-profits out of that foundation.
Porter Start's not out of there.
Porter Start might be slight. They're, they're a different tax rate.
They're their own tax rate. So they're not on that, but OE.
But the not-for-profits are OE, Council on Aging and the Family and Youth Services Bureau.
Yep.
For a total of what, 1.2 million a year?
Roughly, right. And if we did not have that budget, we would probably have to either make budget cuts someplace else or move those projects into the general fund or increase the local income tax, which we have the lowest county income tax in the state of Indiana, tied with one other county, which is in southern Indiana.
Exclamation point.
Yes. I have been asked about it. How do we do this with such a low income tax? And it's because of the foundation. We're getting that money every year that we're able to budget for these other programs without having to put it in our general fund budget. And that's going to be in perpetuity, hopefully.
Yeah, come on up.
Oh, I didn't have a question. I'm just meant to ask you, who's doing the mental health study?
What's the name?
Jim, you know the name?
Yeah.
Just a second here.
Is it independent?
Price Healthcare Group out of Illinois. Yes, they're independent.
So it's not local?
No, they're independent.
Okay. So it would be helpful if you could do like a survey, monkey to all his nonprofits and providers in the county, we can tell you what we see going on, give you a lot of information. So are they going to send that to us to do?
Well, they're, they're going around and talking to organizations like yourself. That doesn't mean that your particular organization will, will be.
But I just want to know how that's being done. If there was a survey or?
This is, this is really just touching, trying to give the board of commissioners or county government an understanding of the situation as it applies to the situation of behavioral health needs in this county. Because we really don't know.
Do you know whether that'll be completed?
Soon. It'll be soon.
So it's taking place?
I actually have a meeting with her tomorrow.
Okay.
Hi, Susie Tolefsky, Porter County. I have a quick question for the county engineer. I'm just wondering, out of all the problems we have with stormwater drainage in this county, how, how did you end up, like what are the top, like five worst stormwater drainage problems in the county? Number one. Number two, how did you end up picking these particular ones to avail yourself of federal taxpayer dollars?
So I reviewed, as part of my presentation, I reviewed our prioritization criteria with everybody so those were presented. That's how we weigh and evaluate all problems. The top problems include Shorewood Forest. I talked about Greater South Haven based on those criteria. Talked about Nord Stimson Drain as well. And then your question about federal taxpayer dollars, all of our programs and these projects are made for by local funds, stormwater user fees. So I don't understand the last part of your question.
Well, I mean, the last part of the question goes to the fact that ARPA funds would be used for addressing the issues.
I've asked, yeah, I've asked, right, part of the process was that we've been working on these projects and these priorities for many years now. So this is, this request is now approved of that, it's a continuation of the work we've been doing since our office opened the doors.
Okay, so typically the money comes from the county taxpayer?
No, it's a user fee.
Oh, I'm sorry, a user fee.
From the stormwater user fee.
Okay. And are, is there enough money out of the stormwater user fee to pay for the two projects that you discussed?
No, I reviewed that as well in my presentation. So we, our annual budget generating of stormwater user fees is about 3.8 million dollars. We're left with about 1 million, 1.25 million for construction and maintenance and operation on our 600 miles of great enough stormwater infrastructure. We've got over 100 detention basins that we're responsible for. Another 1.25 or so goes towards debt service to pay for the improvements that we raised for Greater South Haven, which was the top priority when we opened our department back in mid-2016. So no, we don't have enough to pay. Shorewood Forest, by my estimate, by the study that's being wrapped up now, probably about 30 million dollars worth of liability. Greater South Haven, the three subdivisions there, probably about the same amount. Nord Stimson Drain, it's over a million dollar project. Carriage Hills, which I also spoke about in my presentation, probably on the order of 1.4 to 1.5 million, with the final estimates will come pending final design and engineering on that, on that project.
And there's additional other projects out there too, right?
Correct.
Okay. Gosh, we could use the entire, you know, round of ARPA funds for all these stormwater drainage projects.
But that's the point of our prioritization process is to spend the money on the most immediate needs, on the highest priority projects. So that's the projects that we've asked for, requested money for from commissioners and council are at the top of that list. But yes, there's, we have 600 million, 600 miles of infrastructure and 100 plus detention basins. So we have hundreds of millions of dollars of liability and value of infrastructure in the ground. So yeah, to keep up with that is a, is a tall war financially, both the best market, city with roads, city with bridges, that's the job with county government when it comes to managing our public infrastructure, is to manage and burn as a effort.
Okay. Well, my concern about all of this is that, you know, out of the four people that were included in that original group, the two commissioners and the two councilmen, one of the councilmen lives in Shorewood Forest. So my concern was that he was trying to perhaps pull some money into Shorewood. Jeff, I see the faces there. Just, I'm asking, I'm just saying that's a concern. Is that a fair concern or not a fair concern?
It's not a fair concern.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm voicing, I'm, well, I think a lot of people don't know that, right? That Councilor Mike Justin lives in Shorewood. So he was part of that originally.
I understand with that, it really has.
Well, it does have something to do with it.
Not really. In your world it does, but not ours.
Well, I'm, well, I'm just saying, well, I'm just saying there's many other projects out there. And this is obviously a special round of money coming from the federal taxpayer that's really intended for pandemic recovery and relief. I mean, I understand that there is a section in there for obviously some infrastructure, for broadband and also for some stormwater drainage. I'm just saying that when you analyze all of the county projects and you only included four people in your original group, you and Commissioner Blaney and then Councilmember Rivas, Councilmember Justin, that for that amount of money, out of the first tranche of the 16 million, that amount of money to go directly basically, you know, to his neighborhood is, you know, a little worrisome because, I mean, it was not opened up to full public comment and, you know, inquiry, right? So I'm just saying that it's a concern, you know? That's, you know, and really, in my book, it should be coming from the taxpayer, the county taxpayer, you know, this, this special stormwater drainage fee that's assessed. And, you know, obviously if there's not enough money, maybe we need to think about addressing that. I do too.
You do, right.
Yes, yes. So I'm just bringing that, so, yes.
Did you come to any of the public meetings we had out there?
I did go to one, actually, yes. Yeah, it was packed. It was, I think, in September.
The one in the clubhouse?
Yeah, the one in the clubhouse.
Kero's back.
I was kind of off to the side. I was not even in that main room. I was off to the side. So I could, if there was actual some presentation like this, I was not able to see it. You know, you should have stuck around for then the Lake Committee presentation. And actually, I do want to speak with you about some things. You should have stuck around afterwards because you would have seen how some of the presenters there were treating one of the female board members, which was very concerning to me. It's, it's, you know, I think that there are some issues in Shorewood that maybe I should tell you about that are concerning. So before this amount of federal taxpayer dollars gets funneled to Shorewood. Anyways, so that's just one of my concerns, you know? I don't know if there was any sort of self-dealing there or self-interest there or not, you know? I mean, I trust the county engineer, obviously. I just think that these are special round of money. It should really, the primary purpose of the money should be obviously to help people who were affected most by the pandemic. So my other question has to do with the, if, can you name who's going to be on the main ARP committee? Who are the members of that main ARP committee?
You missed that part of the meeting.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I don't know who the council members are going to be because they will appoint them and they have a meeting tonight. So hopefully they'll appoint them tonight. I will be the commissioner with, Vicky will be the facilitator. And we will also have the county attorney as a non-voting member.
So it'll be Vicky and you and the county attorney and?
Two council.
And two council members. Okay. And then for the subcommittees, maybe you talked about this, but how, how will you be selecting?
Well, once again, we went through all this already, but I'm happy to do it again. Each committee will have one commissioner who we appointed today, two council members who they will appoint, two citizens. We have an application online that will be open until March 8th. We're hoping to start appointing them on March 15th. The commissioners will appoint one and the council will appoint the other.
Okay, I guess, I'm sorry, I should clarify my question in terms of the criteria for the citizens that will be sitting on these subcommittees, I guess. That's what I was wondering, if you develop what criteria?
We have an application and you should fill out why you would be helpful to the board and what your qualifications are and then we will choose.
I know, okay. Maybe I'm not making myself clear. I guess what criteria will the members of these, the commissioners, whoever's, are you going to sit on one of the subcommittees then also? Okay, so I guess what I'm wondering is how are the citizen committee members, what is the criteria that you will be using to select those members? Like let's say there's, let's say there's 100 people that apply and you're only going to choose two. I'm saying what are the criteria? How are you going to choose those two people, let's say, because?
Go through the applications and pick the best ones. There's three of us here.
Three commissioners?
Yes.
So I, so, so to clarify then, the three commissioners will be selecting the citizens that will be on each of the subcommittees?
We will be selecting one and the council will be selecting the other.
Okay. So again, I mean, I, if I looked at the application.
Total of eight citizen members.
There'll be a total of eight citizen members. Okay. It just seems like a very, very, you know, small amount of citizen members. I don't know if you guys consider.
Eight?
Well, there's two on each subcommittee, right?
Right.
That's not that many people. I mean, like if there were five or something or 10 or something, that'd be like more reasonable. I mean, two on each one, it seems very restrictive, you know? And I still don't understand what the criteria is that you're going to use to select them. I mean, how are you going to select which one is the best one? You know, because I, I mean, I looked at the, I looked at briefly, I just looked, maybe you changed this, I don't know, but I looked at the application and it just basically asked for basic information, you know, name, number, address. And I think there's a section there asking, you know, occupation. I didn't see anything further on there.
It lists which committee would you like to?
Right, you choose a committee.
And when you click on which one you want to be on, a box opens up where you can fill in your qualifications and any relevant experience that would lead you to be a good committee member.
Okay, but there's no other, I mean, you don't know how you're going to pick people, basically?
Look at the, look at their application.
I know, but what's, you know, I guess I'm wondering what is the criteria that you're looking for?
It depends on the committee and it depends, people who have experience, people who have education perhaps, people who have particular interest in this area.
Okay, well, that's all I'm asking. I'm just kind of asking what, you know, are the criteria you're going to be looking for? I mean, that's, that's it, you know? Because I didn't see anything enumerated on there. But I would ask that you maybe expand it. I mean, two citizens each is, just doesn't seem.
Well, we already voted on us.
Okay, well.
We got here.
Oh, I didn't realize that, sorry.
The agenda.
Did you vote on the 500,000 for the county trustees?
No, that was the.
We're still in.
We're still in that, okay, yeah. I would hope that that, I mean, honestly, I feel like that should be a larger amount, but I was hoping that maybe you guys could hold off on that and then perhaps open it up to a hearing with the Subcommittee for Social Services.
That looks pretty open. We can add to that number.
Okay, you can add to it.
It's like, we keep hearing that the mental health, we're only giving 25,000.
Right, that's just a study. Right, no, I understand that.
And we now have four trustees. Now, we now have four trustees instead of two. So now we have four trustees. We added two trustees to that committee.
Oh, to the, which committee? To the social service?
On.
The social service?
The Health and Social Services Committee.
So that committee will have four trustees plus two councilmembers.
One commissioner, two citizens.
Plus, one commissioner, two citizens. Well, that's why I'm asking if you, well, you know, if you guys already voted on this, I would have expanded the citizen input, obviously, the only two. That's not that, that many citizens, honestly, right? And the other thing is what I would ask for is I, you guys should consider, is my, my view, is that, no offense, but instead of Commissioner Blaney being on that main committee, maybe switch it out and have Commissioner Biggs be on that main committee. And I feel that way, and I'll let me explain, you know, is because you two were involved in that first sort of, you know, do you have any comment, Commissioner? Good.
We did already vote on it.
We've already been through this, which was once before. So, no comment.
Been through what?
No comment.
Wait, you're telling me no comment? Or, I should not have a comment, or you don't have a comment?
You're going to start your question answering now, and I'm saying, I'm just beating you to the punch, is all I'm doing. No comment.
I'm just asking some questions. Sometimes you make these facial expressions and I feel like you're going to say something. So I just want to leave it open to you to make a comment if you'd like, you know. I'm just concerned that, you know, she was involved in that, in that first four, you know, group of four that had decided the allocations without, obviously, public comment and likely violation of the open door law. So I would have preferred to see, I guess, Commissioner Biggs be at the helm of that main committee instead of Commissioner Blaney. But maybe that could be switched, no?
It's already been voted on.
Well, maybe you can vote on it again, right? Maybe you can revert and vote on it again because we're kind of redoing things, aren't we, which we've had to, you know, pretty much do. Been sort of forced into it. But I am appreciative though, very much appreciative that you guys have reverted. I'm just saying, maybe you guys should consider opening things up a bit because it's, what I'm concerned about is, again, I'm going to mention your cronies, you know, getting your cronies on these as the citizens, and then basically we're going to wind up with the same basic allocations. That's what I'm concerned about. And also, do you know how many public hearings each subcommittee will have?
Well, it's going to be fluid. It could be, you know, we've given some basic guidelines of a weekend meeting, an evening meeting, but there probably could be more. It really depends on how each committee, what they take on the discussion. So they might need to meet quite a few times.
So are you saying that each committee has a certain amount of latitude, basically, kind of to figure out, you know, how many public meetings they might need?
Yeah, I think it's, it's going to depend on how the conversations are going in.
Okay, well, that's fair.
They're, they're working groups, right?
Okay, yeah.
All of the committee meetings will be public.
I'm sorry?
All of the committee meetings will be public.
Each subcommittee meeting will be public?
Correct.
Right, okay. No, but what I'm, I'm saying is like, I was wondering how many will each subcommittee have, but you're explaining that they could kind of choose, right? So it's kind of fluid. So maybe one will have.
It is fluid.
It is fluid. That's what, that's a good idea. So that's good. So I appreciate that. Also, I'm glad to see that our county auditor will be heading everything up because she's always, always an excellent resource, and we're very lucky to have her. So I'm glad that you all came to agreement on that. That's an excellent choice, Commissioner. Good. I appreciate that. So thank you to all of you. My favorite commissioner over there, thank you so much. And thank you very much for, you know, recognizing the stake and, and coming backwards and, you know, redoing the entire process. And that's thanks to Commissioner Biggs. I think in the end, if you do it properly, you know, and we act openly, okay, with, you know, a fair selection of citizens, you're going to come up with some really great projects that are going to address the most crucial needs that are related to the pandemic. And, you know, hopefully, other counties will maybe learn from Porter County and, you know, the great work we've done here. So thank you so much, the commissioners.
I don't see anybody else getting up. So with that, we're going to close the public hearing. Now we're going to talk, now we're ready for a motion.
Yeah.
Now we're ready to talk about the four items that are before us today.
You want the motion or you want the discussion first?
Whatever you want.
I just, the only thing I have to say, there's, one of the residents that came up and spoke, said something about private developments. And we don't work, and Mike can, Mike can elaborate on this if he cares to, but we, none of these communities that we've spoke about today are a private development. And every one of these systems that we're, that need our attention and repair, we own. We are responsible for them according to state law. And we wouldn't be in there if we didn't have to be in there. I just want to make that clear.
So back to the business on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a proposed first part of ARP ordinance for adoption. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up.
That was easy.
Edie.
Yeah.
I hear you, Edie. I hear you.
So this is a proposed change in the employee handbook. It has to do with modifying Section 8.06, would be retitled Travel and Expense Claims. The cut to the chase portion is that the reimbursement would be, employees' reimbursement for travel would be pursuant to the GSA website, which is the U.S. General Services Administration website that has all the per diems, mileage, food costs, per diems, et cetera, done down by zip code so that they're actually related to where the travel is occurring. So that's the change here. Instead of from a maximum predetermined amount, the employees' reimbursement would be at the GSA, according to the gsa.gov website, to determine the amount of per diem for meals based on the location of the travel. So if you go to that website and put the zip code in, it gives you the numbers according to the government that's dealing with the cost of the travel in that location. That's the request that the Sheriff's Department has run through, Human Resources. She's not with us this week, but I know that she emailed and that she had reviewed this and didn't have any suggestive changes beyond what had been submitted and requested by the Sheriff's Department.
I'd like to ask, Vicky, since she's here, is, are you okay with this? I mean, because it's going to, it's going to be a little bit more work on your end.
Yeah, because as I understand, the departments will be submitting their per diem, and we'll have to check what that GSA is. And obviously, we always verify where it is you're all going.
But it's a website you can pull up and download real quick.
And we also will submit copies of that website printed out.
Yeah.
Does this apply to all departments or just sheriffs?
I think it's just the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, that makes it a little easier. And is it just mileage reimbursement or food or both?
Both.
Okay. Because right now we filed those stakes.
Right, lodging too, right?
Yes.
Lodging too, yeah.
This is not just the sheriff's. This is the handbook change for all departments.
Well, this is for everyone.
For everyone. That's why it's Section 8 of the handbook for 8.06.
Which is smart. We're all doing the same thing.
Especially in that world, doing those reports. You've got to have consistency or you'd be driving her people and everybody crazy because you have four different things coming in.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the proposed change to the county's employee handbook. It's regarding per diems. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And next up, we have an ordinance. We're going to create a fund to receive monies from various agencies pertaining to the work of special units. What does that mean, special units?
This is our special services. So they are units that different officers work on, and we are reimbursed for all of their overtime.
Okay. So this is a public hearing, public hearing for this ordinance only. We're going to, we're going to pause the commissioner's meeting, open up a public hearing, and we're going to give you three opportunities to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance and three opportunities to come forward to speak against this ordinance. And what this ordinance is, is we're creating a fund that money can go into. So the first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? And with that, the public hearing's closed. Throw it to the commissioners for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on an ordinance for a new fund of received monies for variance agencies pertaining to the work of special units for the Sheriff's Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That's first reading. Second reading will be on the agenda at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Bailey, Clerk.
Hello.
You got the floor?
So did you want to see the PowerPoint that we have shown in the past, or do you want me to move forward with an explanation? I'm not really sure.
I'll let the commissioner ask. She has a PowerPoint that she...
One that we use in our public hearings, just our PowerPoint that just kind of tells you what a vote center is. But you already know what a vote center is.
You know, I have to do it for my benefit. I, I mean, I've done my own, I know, I'm clear on what a vote center is.
Okay, I just wanted to ask everybody to see if they wanted to hear about it. So thank you for bringing it.
Yeah, no problem.
So...
So earlier this month, I emailed you the link for the Porter County Votes on Our Plan. It's quite detailed and lengthy, so we could only send the link through our server. But the election board has already acted on it. The election board had to have a unanimous approval in order to get this ball rolling. So we have done that last Friday. It's been open for the 30-day comment period for public. We've had three informational sessions in addition to all of our election board meetings where it was discussed. So now we come to you, just kind of so you can say, yes, we are aware of this and move forward with the plan per the state code that we created in 2019. It's kind of just a stamp that you are aware of what's happening. The election board already took the action on it.
So Madam Clerk, how were, how were the listening sessions? How did they go? Did you hear, did you hear certain things that may be concerning, or what was the...
The most concerning part was just, not, I wouldn't even say it was concerning. It was more questions. There wasn't so much negative comments as much of misunderstanding. Typically, vote centers have a negative connotation, and the good thing about vote centers in Indiana is that each county gets to make it their own. So while we, by code, only need to have about 10 and a half vote centers, we have moved forward, our election boards thought that we definitely needed more representation in Porter County, and so we're proposing 44 vote centers.
Okay.
And what that would do is the 28-day period before actual election day, Porter County voters can go to any of our early vote sites, whichever one's most convenient to them. And on election day, they were pigeonholed into going to the polling locations that we told them they had to go to. This will make it more uniform and a standard approach, just like during early voting. On election day, you'll also be able to pick whichever polling location fits into your schedule best.
And our, and our equipment will allow that?
Correct.
Correct, which, that was a limitation before.
Correct. And our equipment during the 2020 election, while we had the maximum amount of equipment out at early voting that we could have, that was because all of the rest of our equipment was coded per polling location. With this equipment that we have, we can utilize it to the full extent, just like we do during early vote. You can go to any of those. They're programmed for every ballot. Now, if we need another machine because we're having heavy volume, we will be able to take any machine because they'll all be coded for all counties and alleviate the volume during early vote as well.
Some of that might not even be a problem if you can go anywhere. If there's a long line at yours, you can just go down the road.
Absolutely, just go down the road.
The process isn't changing. You're still voting in the same way with the same equipment. It's literally just the ease of access to the locations that's changing. That's one of the questions too, with, about the voting process. It's exactly the same. You're doing it exactly the same way.
Well, I can tell you from the equipment standpoint, I, there were a lot of people that I knew going into the election with the new equipment. There was a lot of concern, obviously. But I don't think I heard one bad comment from anybody. And a lot of the seniors that I know were very happy because they had that piece of paper. And I think, I think that's, you know, they're, they're very comfortable. They were surprised how easy it was. So I, you know, I think that from where we were a few years ago, I think we're...
No hanging chairs.
We're coming forward and we're trying to move forward, right?
Correct.
So, anybody else? No.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution approving the designation of Porter County as a vote center county. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
It's a good plan, I think.
Yep. Allison, there she is. Were you hiding in the back?
I was. How are you guys?
We're getting there.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon. You have, what do you, you're way too bubbly.
Good evening.
That would have worked an hour ago, but...
I tried.
I'm going to put my feet down a little bit, get a little lower. So what we have here is another, is this a fund or an ordinance? This is an ordinance that renames the Porter County Truancy Court Fund, which is a non-reverting fund, 4927, to the Porter Circuit Court Problem Solving Court Fund for the receipt of fees associated with any problem-solving court administered by the Porter County Circuit Court. So it sounds like we're renaming a fund that makes more sense in the name than it does in the words.
Yeah, it streamlines our process for collection of the fees for our problem-solving courts that the circuit court runs. So it's the Juvenile Problem Solving Court. So we have a Juvenile Drug Court. We have the Juvenile Truancy Court. And we will, we are currently working on doing a Juvenile Mental Health Court. So we'll be really excited to come back and talk to you guys about what that's going to look like eventually. So we're actually working with the state right now to move forward with that.
Good.
So what this does, it just streamlines the whole process of collecting all the fees into one fund instead of three separate funds.
Okay. So again, this is going to be a public hearing because we're going to, this is first reading. We're going to create a new fund, or really renaming the fund, but we still have to do it in a public hearing. So we're going to pause the commissioner's meeting, open up a public hearing, and same, same as the last time, we're going to have three opportunities to come forward to speak in favor of this name change and three to come forward to speak against the name change. So first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this name change of ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor? Third call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against the name change of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against renaming of this ordinance? And with that, public hearing's closed. We're going to open it up to the commissioners for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on first reading for an ordinance renaming the Porter County Truancy Court Fund to Porter County Circuit Court Problem Solving Fund. This is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Allison.
Guys, good to see you.
Good to see you. Next up, IT Lee Childers. This is for copy machine lease agreements for 11 copiers for the following departments, and they're listed up on the board and on the agenda here. I know this may seem like a lot, but I can tell you from our perspective up here, the last two years, we've really, we've had a lot of departments that sort of wanted to switch out... switch out a little early and we, we sort of dragged, drug our feet a little bit, made sure that this equipment worked and we got our money out of it. So we're, we're now picking up to those replacements. So go ahead, Lee. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, historically, we've always paid for our copiers outright over a three-year term. And the problem with doing that is after that, we end up with a dinosaur that nobody wants to trade in again. Our maintenance agreements go up. We end up with things that we can't buy parts for anymore and then we have to spend, pay this huge expense again. I've worked with Adams Remco now for about five months to get a lease agreement that makes sense and the plan is to have a five-year rotation where every five years, we will replace a fifth of our copiers with new copiers at a lease price. In this instance, we're replacing, I believe it's 11 copiers. We're actually replacing nine and installing two new ones that were needed. The lease agreement calls, the price will be $15.63 a month. If we were to have purchased these like we normally did, the monthly cost would have been $3,300 approximately. So it's a no-brainer.
Yep. Okay, any questions, Lee?
They could slip that you caught on to that and jumped right on it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of Adams Remco, a copy lease agreement for 11 copiers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
Next up, Expo Center, Lori Daly. We have a request to approve catering and concession contracts for the following Aberdeen Manor. These are caters. Aberdeen Manor, Burkey's, Martini's, Master, Nelson's and Pix's. And for concessions, we have BJ's Specialties, Suzie's Cafe and Tate's Place. Good morning, Lori Daly.
Good morning. Afternoon. Sorry.
And I'm starving looking at these names. I'm hungry already.
I was gonna bring lunch in because we figured we'd just be able to stay for the council meeting tonight.
It's a progressive meeting.
There might, there might have been a bottle of wine in there somewhere.
Just shoot me at the hour.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to request catering and concession contracts. That's for 2022, right?
Yeah, we're a little bit late. With all those events canceling, we weren't.
Well, and the prices have been all over the board too with food and everything, so.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, Facilities, Ray Cloy. Three service agreements for garbage pickup.
How y'all doing?
Good. How you doing, Ray?
Doing good. Well, I have the admin center and the upper as a courthouse that's total. They're the only ones that gave the bid because they're the only ones do the containers, the toters. So that's the only one we got. And then Total is the only one they gave us for the jail. So that's why we got one, one estimate.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for three service agreements with total disposal for the following Porter County buildings for a 36-month term. Admin Center, Valpo Courthouse and the Sheriff's Garage. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Ray.
Thanks for all the work on the snow last week.
Yeah, man. That was a. Next up, Development and Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson. Good morning, Bob. Yeah, I'm gonna quit saying that. I think it's habit. What you got, Bob?
First item up we have is Lockmueller Group. This is an agreement for the engineering design for Bridge Number One. Bridge One is Division Road over Hutton Ditch or what I also call Crooked Creek.
Oh.
This is for $387,240.
What kind of bridge is that? Is that just a regular?
It's one of our annually inspected bridges. It's concrete box beams.
So it's a box beam?
Right.
Okay.
And it's deteriorating badly. A lot of this too is the, above the walls are at the creek edge. So there's some problems here.
Guestimate? Engineering estimate?
It's for the actual construction. We're looking at probably, this is 2027 fiscal year, so we're probably looking at $1.4 to $1.5 million to replace this bridge.
Okay. Any comments of Bob on this bridge? We need a engineering services agreement for this?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Lockmueller Group, an agreement for engineering design services for Bridge Number One. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Just so everybody knows, that bridge is gonna be done in '25. So that's a long ways out, but you have to start planning and, and get in production now. So thanks, Bob, being ahead of it. Next up, we have an agreement for Lockmueller Group for engineering design services for Bridge Number 66.
Yes, Bridge 666, this is 250 West over Philip's Ditch. It's full replacement. Again, it's on the list of annually inspected and NDOT sent us the letter saying that, you know, to give consideration to these bridges. So it's taking that off that list.
What kind of bridge is it again?
Concrete box beam.
Is it another one? Okay. Same type of issues, you think?
Same issues.
Okay.
What we're finding with the concrete box beams, asphalt overlay on it, if they don't have a membrane over it, they're, we're getting, we're lucky if we get 30, 35 years out of these bridges.
We need to get 50.
Yeah, we're trying to shoot for 75 if possible.
Well, 75, but in the current state.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so that's what we got for us, engineering service agreement with Lockmueller for Bridge 66.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a master service agreement to provide professional engineering, surveying, planning and our environmental service on an as-needed basis with Lockmueller Group as well.
We have a handful of engineering firms that we have annual services agreements and this one here is for Lockmueller on this. To give you an idea, one of the bridges that they are working on for us on this annual services agreement is the, what I call the U.S. Steel Bridge that goes across 12 and the railroad tracks and goes into the Portage Park and also into the U.S. Steel. This has some really major maintenance work that we have to get into. It's probably going to be over a million dollars for us to fix.
With the buttresses and some of these.
Yes, the buttresses or some settling with the approaches. The approaches are separating from the actual bridge.
It's not good ground up there, I don't think.
No.
So.
Motion to approve.
Real close to the 25 years, so we're also probably looking at a deck overlay on this too.
Yeah. I'll second it. We have a motion and a second for master services agreement for Lockmueller Group for an as, on as-needed basis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And next up, Bob, we got a request to vacate the right-of-way at Biscayne Drive in Lake Eliza. Petitioner is Kim Marie Correles. And so again, we're gonna have to do a public hearing. That's how we do these. And so the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna pause the commissioners' meeting and open up a public hearing. And we're gonna give three opportunities to come forward to speak in favor of this vacation of right-of-way and three opportunities to come forward to speak against this vacation of right-of-way. So first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this vacate of the right-of-way? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this request? Third call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this request? First call, anybody wishing to come here and speak in favor of this request? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this request? And with that, the public hearing is closed. We would, I'll throw it to the board for action and this is on first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
And next up, we got Valpo Events. This is a request to use the courthouse grounds on Saturday, May 7, 2022, from 10:00 to 5:00 for the 2022. How you doing? Chocolate Walk. I didn't mean to start without you.
That's okay. I'm not Katie, but.
This is the Chocolate Walk, not Choc- the Walk. There's a big difference. We're eating chocolate, not chalk. I think. Yeah, what?
Definitely chocolate.
So there will be tables, chairs, signs and tents with no more than 20 stations for distributing chocolate and that's in and around the courthouse grounds.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
I couldn't support that.
Well, there's not enough stations, but other than that.
Well, they'll be throughout the downtown businesses as well.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we're at the end of our meeting here. I think Commissioner Biggs has something he'd like to add.
Yes, we, Mike had talked about, the commissioners have talked about it. We've got an emergency situation that has developed out in Carriage Hills. We are adding that Carriage Hills, that issue out there to the, to the, to the projects that this ARP money, I believe it was $4 million, is to, to address. But given the emergency, the level of emergency out there, I asked the commissioners to throw that back on an ordinance, get it in front of us our very next meeting so we can get it passed and we can get this thing fixed and, and out of the way.
I'll motion to approve it if.
Don't we need to vote on it on our next meeting?
We need to, we would need to open up the whole deal again.
Well, what is the protocol, Scott? What do we need to do?
Well, I think you brought it up, so we've had the discussion. So if we wanted to have a public hearing now on that request, we could do that and then we would be angling towards, just to be clear, we would be, we passed the second ARP ordinance today, subject to appropriation by the council. I guess your request would be the third ARP ordinance or the third revision and that would be to add back stormwater money. We would be, I believe it's in the, in that, at that same level of $4 million. And then we would, after discussion today and some public input, we could bring that back up at our next meeting, which would be March 15. And then we would have the ordinance available then to again review, discuss and pass.
I, I think from my perspective, we talked about this this morning in the Stormwater Board and I know that the engineer, the Stormwater Department is out fixing the problem right now and I know they're also assessing the, the existing infrastructure out there. I don't know if it necessarily qualifies to me as an emergency. I would like to see more information coming back from Mike and finding out what we really